All of the board is present and checked in, so roll call is completed. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. We have no comments from the audience tonight on our signup sheet, so we'll move ahead from that. I need an approval of the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. I second that.
Second. Any discussion? Stacy? I'm sorry, I'm sure. And we're ready for the vote. Motion passes. Deb, would you please read the vision statement for us tonight?
Sure. The vision statement for the Brookings School District is empowering all learners to embrace and be inspired to realize their full potential.
Thank you. Next, we have any conflict of interest to report tonight. Dr. Schultz, are there any of those? So that brings us to our best awards. I'll turn it over to Dr. Schultz.
You. Amanda, we're going to have you come up front for just a second. While she's making her way up, if you didn't see the Brookings Register last week, you were kind of missing out. We'll push right over here. So this best award, actually, the thunder was already stolen by Jay back there. But it just shows this was such a heartwarming story. And so not only did we get to showcase this activity in the Brookings Register, but Amanda has been nominated for a best award, and I'm going to read some of that. We have a sixth grade learner at the middle school who loves going to gym class, and our staff was curious if there would be a way to make attachments to his wheelchair so he could more fully experience gym class. Amanda Chapman was asked if her project Lead the Way class would be interested in brainstorming ways to help Brookings become more involved in gym class. Without hesitation, she answered yes. And after receiving a list of gym units, she had her sixth grade project lead the way learners get into groups and choose a unit to brainstorm. Then they got to work, and with her guidance and encouragement, her class used their hearts and ingenuity to help create some amazing solutions. I am grateful for Mrs. Chapman and her inclusive heart. She truly is the best. And so if you didn't get to see it, it is her class assisted one of our students to make his wheelchair more adaptive to participate in PE class. It was really, really inspiring story, so thank you. There are two award winners in the next recognition, but only one is here tonight. So Becky, do you mind coming up? Maybe that's why she, the other one didn't come. Holly was just like... So we have, this is a pretty exciting best award because when nominations come in from families and students, they really hit the spot. And so Liam was a student at Hillcrest Elementary, or is a student at Hillcrest Elementary, and he is the one who nominated Holly Ballas and Becky Marshall. So he believes they deserve this award because they exhibit exactly what the best award stands for. School has not always been easy, but this year, he has been the most successful of all of his years. He has always had great teachers, however, but he really feels, and his family feels, that something is just different this year. They appreciate knowing that he is taken care of, that they have taken extra time out of their day to call mom about his behaviors, and she appreciates because sometimes it's just easier for her to know what happened at school before he comes home. The fact that his teachers have taken time to learn about him and care so much to know when something is wrong, they want him to succeed as much as his mama does. So all of that being said, I wanted to find one quote. Through your actions and care you put toward Liam, you exhibit the success and triumph that this award stands for. It's not just successes and triumphs of teachers. It is the success and triumph students receive when they interact with these two teachers. As Liam would tell you, he loves them both. Liam, you want to be in our picture? No? Okay. Thought it was worth a try.
More than welcome to stay or leave. Deb is now going to introduce our next presentation.
I invited some special ladies here tonight from the General Federation of Women's Club who have chosen to provide sponsorship for some of their fundraisers to help out our Food for Thought program, which pays for school lunches for those kids that are families that are struggling. So I would like them to come forward and just talk a little bit about why they chose that project and how much they were able to contribute to our fund to help out families in our district with school lunch funds. And so ladies, if you'd just each share your name and then tell us a little bit about.
There is a green button. There's a button on the microphone that says push. Yep. And when it's green, then your microphone's on and ready for you.
I'm Sharon Nichols.
Arvin. Mary Rogers. Erin is our club president.
The General Federation of Women's Clubs was founded in 1890 by journalist Jane Cunningham Crowley of New York City. The women's organization is in 16 countries. The mission of GFWC is dedicated to community improvement by enhancing the lives of others through community service. GFWC International Day of Service launched on September 28, 1923. This day of service was to raise public awareness of food insecurity in respective GFWC communities. The Brookings chapter of GFWC wanted to assist the youth in Brookings who experienced food insecurity. Since many children depend on a hot lunch at school, we chose to support the Brookings School District and help reduce negative lunch account balances. The Brookings GFWC raised funds in 2023 and 2024 for the Brookings School District. Negative account balances. We had a booth at the Brookings Farmer's Market, the Uptown Girls Craft Show, the Holiday Market, and the recent VFW Pancake Feed. We sold baked goods and quilted tote bags. The GFWC Brookings Club also matched up to $500 in donations for both 2023 and 2024. Last year, we raised $1,500, and in 2024, we raised $2,840 in total. In total, from the two years, is $4,340.
I just wanted them to come and thank you. Thank you so much for doing that and also during public awareness to the fact that we do have negative accounts. And this is a great way to provide for those families that do experience food insecurity in our community. So thank you, ladies.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight. It's very, very kind of you to do that. Our next presentation, I guess I could have Deb also introduce them because she has a big heart for this group.
I do, yes. We're happy tonight to celebrating National FCCLA Week. And FCCLA stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. At the time that I joined, many years ago, it was Future Homemakers of America. We have definitely expanded our outreach through this group. So I've been involved since I was a freshman in high school, which is a long time ago. I won't say how many years. And I've continued to work with the organization as a, first of all, as a teacher myself and an advisor, and then in preparing future advisors. So Mrs. Page was one of my students at South Dakota State University, and she's currently the advisor for our FCCLA chapter here in Brookings. So I'll have Mrs. Page come forward with the members of FCCLA.
And again, we'll just make sure that your microphone is on, the push button, and it should be a green light. And then if you pass it, so you can all talk pretty close to it. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Hi, we're Brookings FCCLA chapter, and we're not only representing the Brookings Senior Chapter, but also the Brookings Freshman Chapter and the Brookings Middle School Chapter today as well. Our presentation today is going to kind of talk about what we've done over the past year, some of our awards we've done, and different community service projects.
My name is Isabel Gumbelton.
My name is Lucy Galswick.
My name is Riley Schweinler.
And my name is Tay Hazelhurst.
Some of the community service projects we've already done this year was a Wall of Hope, where we wrote motivational sayings on the wall. We also were a part of the Homecoming Parade. We did trunk or treat, and we had a Minions theme and handed out candy over at Grace Point. We did a Thanksgiving food drive. We handed out healthy snack sacks to teachers during parent-teacher conferences. We did, put together anti-smoking kits and food pack, and packed food for the backpack program. And we also had the heads of the entire month of the career fair for February. So we had a career fair last week for HOSA, and tomorrow's FCCLA's career fair.
Okay, so this year, we had several national qualifiers and several kids who went to nationals. Some of these include Sophie Cadence, Yuki Lada, Ellie Cade, who made top 10, and Kavish. This year, the national conference was in Seattle, Washington, and all of the people who went had a great time, and they did really well in their events.
Just a few months ago, we had our region competition where several of our members made gold, which is 90% or higher on your project. And we even had several make top superior, which is 95% and higher. And then our two Knowledge Bowl teams both qualified for nationals, so that's good. This year also, Olivia Hove and I had the amazing opportunity to run for Region Five office. And good, I don't know. Olivia is now the treasurer of Region Four, so that's good.
Very proud of Olivia for that. It's a big accomplishment for her. Also, a little recap of states. Riley Schweinler, I made national outreach this past year, which means I go around the state. And as you see in this bottom photo, I do vision boards to try to help FCCLA members picture a better future for themselves. Our theme this year is positive changes. We really encourage chapters across the state to promote positive changes, not only within themselves and their members, but also their communities and their school. And last but not least is, of course, National FCCLA Week, which is what brings us here today. We have a lot planned for this week. We're doing a teddy bear fundraiser, actually, today and tomorrow, where people have the opportunity to buy Valentine's Day teddy bears, which will be delivered to people either anonymously or not, depending if they want to. And then we also have a bake sale coming up, and we've partnered with The Cove, which is really exciting. And then we also have the career fair to help our peers really find what they want to do later in life. And some people actually were offered internships last year, so we're really excited for that to happen again. So I say thank you, guys, for letting us all come and talk here. It's been a really great experience, and we hope to work with you guys soon.
Any questions?
I would just say I judged the competition for the Knowledge Bowl, and those questions were not easy. Especially, there was a lot related to, there were some related to governance. There were some related to consumerism, nutrition, and these kids did a great job, or these students did a great job. So congratulations to you on qualifying.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Our next, our next presentation is the literacy team. They've been doing great things.
They are all the way through, yep.
I am going to introduce this, so you have to listen to me for just a minute, but... Oh, come on up, girls. No!
Thank you. This evening, instead of having an administrator report, we wanted to just bring to the forefront some of the work we've been doing with the literacy work and with our literacy team. And so I didn't want to just talk the whole time, so I do have some help. But I'm going to just share a few things that got us to where we are at this point. And one of the things, just keeping in mind when you look around the room, our administrators, we have a lot of administrators in the room. And the big reason for that tonight is just really to show that this is something that we are all in on and making sure that people understand that when you are working and evolving any sort of practice, and especially one that involves that literacy transformation, we understand the work that it's going to take and the length of time it's going to take. However, when I look and just think, even in this room, in the sphere of influence we have, all of us, to some degree, should have that idea that early literacy and literacy in itself is so linked to achievement in life, and achievement in adulthood. This is one of those things that as long as Dr. Schultz is your superintendent, I am adamant that if students are in our school district, they deserve, without hesitation, the ability to read at the level that they're able to read. And we owe that to them. We know that students who read, I put a couple notes down, so I didn't just ramble, I promise. But we know that reading achievement through school and adulthood, it's one of the most arguably important skills that they need for success as an adult. People who can't read are less likely than others to vote. They're less likely to read the news or be stably employed. We know, and I believe firmly, that every child deserves a teacher who is able to teach them how to read. But on the other hand, every teacher deserves to know how to teach children to read. And this is one of the things that we've talked a lot in our administrative meetings and whatnot, that this is us having a Bobcat literary transformation is not saying that what we were doing was not correct. What we know about the instruction of science-based approaches to reading is that many of the things, and they're going to share that with you, they're not new. I want to be really clear. I only read at one place, but I just want to really, really bring that focus in, that the science of reading and having that unwavering expectation that every child in our district deserves good literacy skills and resources and teachers trained in it, that is not an instructional method. There are many instructional methods, and many administrators like one over the other. Just being committed to a foundation of literacy practices that are embedded in what we know to be true now as educators, that is not an instructional approach to anything. It is our commitment and our priority that reading matters. And as a parent, that is really important to me. I do not want my child in a classroom if that teacher has not been adequately trained to teach reading, nor would I expect that from anyone else. And the great thing is, is when I was teaching, we didn't have that. We maybe did, but we didn't, in a sense, know it. And so I would need to go through training in order to be a good classroom teacher. So the great thing about the administrators in the room tonight is that they have dug in. They have spent a lot of time making sure that they are refining their practices so that at an administrative level, even though we have a literacy team, they need to be able to speak to it, they need to act on it, and they need to lead in their own buildings. And again, that's not quick work. This is work that takes time. But a couple real quick things. A lot of what we needed to put the literacy plan in place was already there. We know, we know what people are saying about literacy scores, reading scores across the country, across the state. And honestly, when I came here, I don't think anyone in this room was proud of our reading scores. However, that reading score means very little. It just doesn't. What we then needed to do was dig into what actually is going on. Where are our kids at in reading proficiency in their classrooms? And fortunately, Brookings School District has always had things that we need to really pull this off. We have always had the NWA assessments. We just weren't using them strategically. They weren't necessarily being used to drive instructional change. So why were we using them? Now, we use them, and then we need time to look at what it's telling us. If a child is in a classroom and they are not showing growth, what they should be growing, we can now use our Wednesday staff development time to make those changes to instruction. A lot of schools who will be starting this transformation possibly don't have the progress monitoring program in place, and they don't have time to really rein it all in. So we are fortunate that you had already had those things in place, and now we just need that systematic piece of it. Governor Noem put a substantial amount of money into this. We are fortunate that our admin team, our individuals in this community are saying, we want, we want to do this. We need to do it right. If we don't do it right, and if we don't have a plan, research says it could take up to 17 years to find even a half of a growth in a project of this type that we want to do. We don't have 17 years. And so what we have now is a literacy team led by these two individuals that are helping us become experts at every level, whether that is what we need to know as a board, what I need to know as a superintendent, what all of those individuals in the back need to know as administrators. And that's where the work really comes. And sometimes, often, we, knowledge does not reflect change. I taught that in my class this weekend at USF, and I heard it at church. Knowledge doesn't always lead to change. However, knowledge with a plan, and especially with a plan that is backed by research, by science, by 30... There's over 30 states in the country that do not allow certain ways of teaching literacy for a reason, because the data is so overwhelmingly in the direction of what we need to do. That they say, and we don't want our state involved in that, but I am so thankful that our governor's office and our Department of Education said, "We're not okay with this either." But again, our teachers and our administrators deserve to be trained. And so we have that plan coming into place, because again, we don't have 17 years. So I just wanted to be able to open that up with, we are committed to this as a district. It is about kids' reading. It is not about anything else other than ensuring that kids learn how to read if they come to our school district. So that's my plug for today, and these guys are like, "Ooh, that was quicker than normal." But I am going to let the experts here kind of give you an idea of what we have done at this point to put that plan into motion.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share the work that we've been doing to improve literacy instruction across our district. Over the past year, we've been aligning our curriculum and instruction with the science of reading in response to our ELA scores. We know that literacy is the foundation of all learning, and to ensure success for every student, we must implement evidence-based methods that support strong reading instruction.
Last May, we took a significant step forward by creating a structured plan guided by the South Dakota Literacy Framework. This framework has helped us take a more systematic and explicit approach to literacy instruction, ensuring we meet the needs of all students from pre-K through fifth grade. Additionally, we are making progress in preparing our middle and high school students for success by focusing on explicit reading strategies that enhance comprehension across all subjects.
Specifically, for students in grades six through 12, the South Dakota Literacy Framework emphasizes intentional, systematic, and explicit reading instruction. This means teachers will be modeling strategies such as summarizing, predicting, and questioning, as well as using graphic organizers to support comprehension. We will also prioritize explicit vocabulary instruction, collaborative learning opportunities, and exposure to a wide variety of texts. Technology integration is another key component, ensuring students develop the literacy skills necessary for success in today's world.
One of our main areas of focus in pre-K through fifth grade has been Tier One instruction, the core literacy instruction that every student receives. Historically, our district lacked a common approach, leading to inconsistencies in reading instruction from classroom to classroom. To address this, we have worked to align routines, vocabulary, and curriculum across all grade levels, ensuring every student has access to the same high-quality instruction.
This work has been both challenging and necessary. Many of our teachers already had strong instructional practices in place, but without alignment, students were experiencing gaps in their learning. For example, we have 13 kindergarten classrooms, so we needed to ensure that all 13 teachers were using the same high-quality resources, instructional practices, and vocabulary routines. So this level of coordination is a very heavy lift, but it's essential to providing equitable learning experiences for all of our students. Additionally, our alignment efforts extend beyond grade levels. We also are working to ensure that there's vertical alignment from one grade to the next.
To support this work, our teachers have been meeting monthly with their grade-level teams, principals, and MTSS coaches to refine instructional practices. Our Wednesday early release time has been dedicated to collaboration, allowing teachers to problem-solve and continuously improve their instruction. A significant support in this effort has been the MTSS grant, which has enabled us to work with Compass Learning specialists. Their expertise has provided our teachers with research-based strategies and practical guidance, helping us implement best practices in literacy instruction across our classrooms. Additionally, many of our administrators have taken the Ames Pathway coursework in reading and writing, participated in a book study with DSU on the power of effective reading instruction, engaged in letters training, and received professional development from our MTSS coaches, who are actively sharing their insights with our staff.
This alignment work is critical. It ensures that every student, regardless of their teacher or grade level, receives high-quality, research-based literacy instruction. So by doing this, we are laying a strong foundation in phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension, which are all essential components.
which are all essential components for reading success.
But this work is not just about improving test scores. It's about preparing our students for success in all areas of learning and in life. Strong literacy skills open doors for our students, helping them achieve their goals and thrive.
We're committed to this work because we know that strong literacy instruction changes outcomes for our students. With continued focus, professional development, and support, we believe we will see positive growth in our students' reading abilities.
So thank you for your time and for your ongoing support in helping us build a stronger literacy foundation for our students. We appreciate your partnership in this important work.
And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I can certainly see the passion you have for this, Cory, so I thank you for that. I have one question. What percent of our staff have taken the, is it the Pathways course or whatever? Would you say?
I would say almost all, not 100%, but almost all in each of the buildings, in the elementary for sure.
Other questions from board?
This is more of a comment. Go ahead, go ahead.
Just so people online know, will you guys both introduce yourselves?
Yes, I was going to do that.
Yep, no, go ahead.
My name is Cory Davis. I was a kindergarten teacher at Madera for years, and now I'm literacy coordinator in reading intervention.
And I'm Sarah Webersick, principal here at Dakota Prairie Elementary.
And my question was just going to be, Dr. Schultz said, so what does the board need to know? I know you're kind of giving us that baseline, but as you guys continue your work, I would just say we're open for you guys to continue to share with us what items are lacking. It's great to hear about the Wednesday time being utilized really, really well. Just to be honest, I haven't always been a fan of keeping that time. And so as you're utilizing it, it's just great to hear that that time counts and is working and all of those things. So just keep communicating so we can support that kind of work too.
I have one smart statement for meeting.
Go ahead.
And tonight, when you drive down the road and you see people reading on their phone, you kind of wonder, where did they get their reading proficiency? I mean, it's amazing how many people read on the phone when you're...
Thank you.
I guess along with that, I would also want to compliment all of our staff and administrators who have taken this task on. And it isn't ever easy to get everyone aligned, but I just appreciate all the work from all the administrators and staff for working toward this goal of literacy in our district. So thank you. So we'll move into our communications portion of the meeting and performance and oversight. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Do. We have a couple meetings coming up. We will be part of the insurance meeting, and that's February 18th, and one of us will be in attendance at that. And then we'll also be meeting the last Friday in February, February 28th, to go over bills.
Next, we have facilities.
Yeah, we met on January 17th since that last board meeting, and you guys received all of those notes from that meeting, which was just some comprehensive discussions about kind of long-term planning with the city and some different items that we're talking about in relation to relationships with them, and some additional conversations around some athletic facilities as well. So hopefully you got all of those notes.
Thank you for that summary.
Thank you for, Amanda, for taking notes. Or Stacy, I can't remember who did at that meeting. Very helpful.
Policy and governance?
We met. We had three policies we were reviewing, and we realized that we needed to spend more time with all of them. So at the present time, the ones that we're reviewing are the early graduation. We're looking at that. We need to get a little bit more information from the high school staff regarding that. And then seclusion and restraint, which deals with the policy that we have for seclusion and restraint of students with some behavioral issues. And again, we decided that we needed a little bit more information before we moved forward and presented that to the board. So we are working on those, and we'll hear more about those. We hope to have that at our March meeting, be the first reading. And then the wellness policy. We mentioned that earlier. We are working on that. We have a committee set up or established of members of the community that will serve on that policy committee, and I will represent the board on that. And we're going to look at our current policy and then try to come up with, look at a model recommended policy that comes from associated school boards, and then move forward. So we have not set a date for that yet, but we will be doing that very soon. So we have been working, but we don't really have a lot to share tonight other than that we're still working.
Yes, we had a very productive meeting. It just didn't produce anything.
From the wellness, are there notes from the wellness? Okay, that's what you're saying, that wellness one hasn't met yet. But we will, as a board, be able to get notes during that time? That'd be great.
Yep, you will. We hadn't gotten, we wanted to get that model policy from associated school boards, and we're waiting for that. And then I think Summer, Dr. Schultz has identified people that will serve on the committee, and then we'll pull everybody together.
Correct, and Stacy is leading that committee.
Great.
And yeah, you should have got the summary from our...
Yep, I got that one. Yep.
Okay, next, communications is from our finance committee. It's Wes and I, and I think it would be wise to set up another meeting, especially prior now to negotiations and that sort of thing. So we'll be working to get a date and get that worked out. Otherwise, we have not...
When in doubt, delegate. So Stacy, we'll delegate to you to find a time.
Any ad hoc committee reports tonight?
I do. Our Brookings Child Care Collaborative has probably met five times since, we've been really busy this month, since our last board meeting. And I believe I forwarded you the large group notes from that. Sort of our big items right now is that we're working to make business requests, initial business requests for the scholarship sponsorship component of our work. And so those will kind of be taking place this quarter, this next quarter. You'll see those, hopefully some good communication. We did also have a lot of discussion around creating kind of a true cost of care number. And so we've been working pretty hard on that. Stacy, I should actually have you look, I'm sure Dr. Schultz is having you look over that number too, but we're kind of honing in around that someone could sponsor a child for around $9,500, which is that cost of care to keep it accessible. Because as we've stated many times, that the early childhood is sustainable, completely sustainable for families that who can pay. And so just trying to get those higher-risk, at-risk kids. So we've been working on that. And then Dr. Schultz has been getting a lot of PR and press too, so you've seen all those things coming out. But with that just comes, you know, more success for that. And then I just would welcome you all, when the Boys and Girls Club has their open house, to please join us, and we can get that information out. Do we have that exact date yet? It's not a public open house at this point, so we'll figure that out and get that all over to you guys.
I would just like to announce that the Brookings School District Foundation is having their Founder's Drive, and all of us have contributed already to that Founder's Drive. But the information is on the school website, I saw it there today. So we'll be watching for that. We have a meeting this Wednesday, which really is going to be a workshop meeting to get things going at a higher level for that. But the board for the School District Foundation has done a lot of work to be prepared for this Founder's Drive. So pay attention and watch and see whatever you can do to promote that, because it really contributed to the grants, the innovation grants we were able to give out this fall to the teachers in our district.
Any other ad hoc reports? Any general comments? I would just mention, reading through all the school reports. Kindergarten screening dates, what are they, Tana? I didn't write it down, but I want it to be... Of February. So Friday, the 21st of February, and Monday, the 24th. I think it's important for the community to get to promote those dates as well.
I would like to promote one date too, just in case people are interested. But the United Way calendar is an attempt to post all of the things that are happening in our community regarding mental health. And on February 19th, it's a Wednesday, there is a workshop, Stronger Together, on suicide prevention. So if anyone in the community is interested in that workshop, go to the website, get signed up or registered for that if you're interested.
I might simply say that watching the legislative session is important, and there's really policy initiatives out there that are both good and somewhat disturbing. But so I'm trying to watch that and communicate with our legislators here and there, and it is what it is, so.
Yeah, a lot of things that are hitting close to home for us, aren't they?
And just on that, I attended the legislative coffee last Saturday, and the next one is on the 22nd of February. So if any of you are interested, you learn a lot, and you can ask questions of the legislators as well.
Thank you, everyone. We will now move on to our superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Schultz.
A couple, I'm not going to go through it all because it is quite long. There is a link to the AASA blog on the schools of thought that recognize the Brookings School District on our efforts and work in early childhood. Just a real brief update, because I'm not sure how much was on Nate's transportation report, but the school start time committee work has begun. Dr. Vox is also on that with Nate. We really needed, I wanted an administrator. I obviously can't be at all of these committees. I just can't and do them justice. So she is serving as an administrative rep on that for our building principals. And they had their first meeting, which really was able to just get perspectives from the different people in there. But one of the things that came out of that, Nate then did have a meeting with the Brookings City Engineer, Charlie Richter. And you may have seen it out in social media and on the city's website, but Brookings Area Transportation Plan is now being, their master plan is under consideration. And so by Nate and going and meeting with Charlie, they have added some of our questions and concerns that center around congestion in school areas at certain times. Because the school start time committee, we wouldn't make changes. We wouldn't make significant changes to any school start times unless it solved one of our high-priority issues. And some of those are, you know, there's not that many of them. We don't want to change just for the sake of change or because, you know, there's a complaint or something. We want it to target certain things. And obviously, that congestion and safety around our school zones is one of the concerns. And so we just really encourage people to participate in that survey that the city has put out, because it also includes work for us on our school start time work that we're doing. So that was really nice of them to allow us to collaborate with them. And now that survey will be able to assist us and the city. So we do appreciate that.
Quick question. When you're saying start time, just clarifying, we're talking about start and release times of school. It's not just morning. Okay, got it.
Exactly.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be so specific.
No, no, I remember my first summer here, and when we were really trying to, I really wanted to bring back the in-town, school-to-school transfer. And when it wasn't coming together very easily, I said, "Well, then let's look at staggering the starts." You know, because I just, we needed to have that school-to-school. But it's such a big situation, you know, and with that system. Regardless, some of the things that Nate has been brainstorming and looking at, some good things, some good suggestions will come out regardless of if school start and end times do change. But this just gives us a little bit more to work with on a city level. Last week, you know, we have been celebrating Mr. Foster's Middle School Principal of the Year Award for a long time, but we should just one more time. It's like the birthday month that never ends. However, I will say that, and in my report, you see the picture, we were really, I joke with him, but being the Principal of the Year in South Dakota is not to be taken lightly. I know that a team of us were out there, all representing. And the reason I picked the picture I did for the superintendent report, and I don't know if you saw on social media my post that said, "Success is defined when those closest to you are proud of you." And I know that without a doubt, that the administrative team and this school community is proud of Mr. Foster. And so although I make light of it sometimes, it was just really great to be able to, I was out there on a different issue. So we were able to celebrate with him on that luncheon, and he was recognized by Secretary Graves. And so in all seriousness, we are just really proud of him.
Very proud, yes.
I also put some advocacy piece in there. Keep in mind, there's approximately just under 500 bills that have been introduced in the 100th session this year. I know there's even questions as to whether lobbyists and that sort of thing should be out there. But the reality is, if I was trying to keep track of which of those 100 bills affected our school community, and keep in mind, even last week when I was in Pierre, the municipalities were out there. And so I was able to have some really good conversations with Mayor Hope and our city administrator, Paul Brizino, and things that affect them. If it affects them positively or negatively, it will affect our school too. And that's why it's so important for us to have people out there, because I simply could not stay on top of 500 bills and where they land. I do think it's important to note that we did have a legislative reception last Wednesday evening. All three of our district's seven legislators, who I work with probably the most, although, you know, others do represent us. But all three of them did come to the reception. They visited with me about bills that would potentially, they ask a lot of questions. I was just, I was really proud of our legislators and the way they are representing our community, but also how they are perceived by others in Pierre. I was just really proud that they were ours. And so that's not me saying anything political. It's just that in a time where public education is not always raised to the level of respect I'd like it to be, they really provided that for us out there. Both bills that were originally drafted to bring in educational scholarships or vouchers into South Dakota, those have both died. However, as we know, vehicle bills are allowed in South Dakota, and one was dropped, I believe last Wednesday was the last day for new bills. But when there's a vehicle bill, it just says, I don't remember what it says, maybe "Make South Dakota Great" or something. Literally, they just, you know, a bill just says something like that with nothing in it. And then they'll add the language and the meat to it later. So in Pierre, we know that nothing is ever over, good or bad. But I do believe that the Senate, in their weekly review last week, did give consideration to the fact that they didn't feel they have, that the education scholarships does not have enough support for them to continue that fight this year. But I do believe that some bills went through today also. I'm not going to go through all of them, there's plenty. But we just really have to stay vigilant to that final work with appropriations and with education funding, because really, that is something at the heart of what we need to be keeping our eyes on here. Last night, I scheduled the boundary analysis work review just to make sure it was in families' hands, in staff's hands, that just exactly what we talked about at our work session, where we prioritized the things. Again, we don't change boundaries to change boundaries, but we needed to determine what priorities and what significant factors would be included in the... priorities and what significant factors would be included in the boundary work. And I wanted to make sure that I had a clear direction on what grades you wanted included in that. And so everything that was approved or decided upon at the Board of Ed work session was in that letter. The good thing is that with this analytical program, we are going to be able to do it and take a lot of bias out, put in the priorities, and have the program help me align things and that sort of thing. And so there are, again, no changes to be made to boundaries for the 2005-2006 school year. The goal will be that the committee will be providing the Board of Ed options for different boundaries to be finalized by fall of 2025, and allowing parents to know their boundary with the new work somewhere around that end of that first semester next year, the end of 2025, which would provide a lot of time for those additional considerations and people to plan accordingly. The only other thing I had was the Founder's Drive, and Deb already talked about that, so.
Any questions for Dr. Schultz?
No, just thanks for the extensive work on the boundary stuff. It looks great as a starting point.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we will then move on. I have to get through all of these.
Yeah, you just go to the down arrow, right next to it. Next to where it says next item.
I don't see that, but, okay.
I'll show you sometime.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
A second, please, in a second.
Should I get to the thinking?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Wes is getting there yet, but yeah.
You got it. They're manticing these computers.
Lisa, I did want, it wasn't in the report, but we had talked that we should at least, we don't have an update on the Fifth Street Gym work, but I did intend to just give the only update I can really give, and that is still that we are in negotiations on a proposal with an entity. And due to state law, you know, I can't share who that is or the specifics around it, but things are on track, things are being worked on, the powers, those individuals working on our behalf and that entity's behalf to get the legal language in place. I think they're getting fairly close. And so once we have that, then all that information comes out. But it is not our story to tell as far as who's interested and what they are offering and that component. So we just don't have anything additional to share on that.
We're not canceling volleyball or group walking classes.
No.
So no one needs to worry about that.
No. No changes to programming in the gym as in the foreseeable future.
Any, any alternative date that you could?
I asked, I asked our attorney today if he could give me an estimate, and he just couldn't, although, as you know, with some of this, there's just been a few things we've had to dig in. Some of the agreements and contract language with Fifth Street Gym and easements and parking and all of the things related to the sale of the middle school way back, it's just taken a while to dig into the legal components of it. That's the piece that's taking long, not the negotiations between the two individuals. It's the legal components that make sure that everything in the agreement would be legal for the next person moving forward.
Thank you for that report, Dr. Schultz. The consent agenda was approved, motion passed, so we'll move on. The donated items, I need a motion in a second to?
I move approval.
I second that.
Been approved. This month, we have quite a few organizations throughout Brookings who donated for the Disability Awareness Campaign, and also for another group that donated for the esports. And so just thankful for all those individuals who donated there. Any questions or, okay, ready for that? We're ready for that vote, Stacy?
Deb moved it, we'll get there.
Okay, and that motion passes. Our next action item is to approve the 2025-26 and 26-27 school calendars. Could get a motion for that, please?
I move approval.
Second, please? I will second. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, could, we have Dr. Schultz just give a little bit of background of how we arrived at these, the calendars and the process.
Seems fast for, I just don't have a lot of the background info, yep. You know what, just mean, want more info on what the committee did, the work that they did, decisions. We talked about the graduation at one meeting, but otherwise.
Yeah, I think that would be good for the public, just to know that early graduation has been moved. I mean, the date has been moved up from Memorial Day weekend, just for people to be aware of that. Yeah, so what we are approving are a two-year calendar, beginning, obviously, with the 25-26 school year. We did do survey perception data, asking some questions of students, parents, and staff, as far as trying to establish some, when we do, the way I like to do calendars is to really get a system, in a sense, get a foundation that is pretty consistent from year to year. If you took the questions or if you took the survey, you might have noticed that some of the questions seem sometimes repetitive or almost like, hold on, is that how she asked earlier? And there's a reason for that. I really stole it from, there's a formula that if we were doing other pieces, but really, we have to, the questions really needed to determine when we wanted to start and when we wanted, first off, if you looked at just the start date, would you rather have a late start or would you rather have a middle or an early August start? And the later August start was higher, and that's good. And then you have to ask, though, is that important, more important than when you get out? And so if you only looked at that one, which is why the questions, they're strategic in nature to determine how early is too early, how late is too late, but is getting out versus when we start more of a priority, because you can't have both. When people get to just say, gosh, we really like that late start this year, okay, are you good going till June? Because if you're not, I can't promise you that I can make this work. And I can't promise you I can make it work if we start late and have snow days. I can't promise certain breaks, certain things that people have learned to like. So it is, after 19 years of creating school calendars, there really is kind of a way to go about asking the questions to get what really is a priority. And that start date was between, go somewhere in the middle or a later, it was pretty overwhelming. There wasn't a big push to go real early, but there was definitely a push to not go so late in May. And the kids were overwhelming in saying that. When I say kids, it was just the high school. And so that's how you have to, the start date and the end date have to coincide with each other. We also worked with our staff mostly to determine how many days difference between semester one and semester two is too many different. Because the nice thing about the calendar that you had in place when I came is that without, by not ending semester one at the holiday break, you have more flexibility for some days off, and you have the ability to even out semesters a little bit better. Now, it was interesting when you asked the people that it really matters. In all honesty, me as a mama Collins who's a fifth grader, my opinion really shouldn't matter much if semester one and semester two are even, because it has no bearing on her instruction, on her work, that sort of thing. So we, again, had to balance out who it really mattered. And those were those questions about for our high school kids. Do you take dual credit classes? Does that interfere? Because keep in mind, if you take a dual credit class that starts, like this year with our late start, students were starting college, you know, dual credits that were staying on their academic transcript forever without always the people in place. Or we have individuals in our counseling department, our high school department, working well outside of their contract time. So all of that played. Now, the really interesting part in the survey and in the meetings, I had a great team committee that worked, and I think by the end, they were just ready to be not getting another email from me ever. But there were two high school people on the committee, and one, this is why you can't have a calendar that will make everyone happy. Here's a prime example. Two high school teachers, one was very, and they both were in agreement on whatever it all came with, but one was, really liked the idea of being able to go into the holiday break with the semester done, knowing that that is done, and then you'd start semester two after the holiday break. The other individual said, do you have any idea what that last week of school is like for kids before holiday break, especially when we have so many students in fine arts and activities? They are putting on performances, they are so busy, and if you throw in semester tests into that week to make sure that it's done, that adds a lot of stress to them. And for that teacher, she said, it makes that week before Christmas unbearable almost at times, it could. So there's two high school people, you know, who don't even necessarily see it the same, but it's such great perspective. You mentioned graduation. One of the things I asked when I came here and we had the Memorial Day graduation, I wasn't quite sure where that came from. So I just asked the questions. And I started with the high school staff or administrators, and I just said, I don't even want to ask questions on this. If this is something that we've done a lot of work on, this is when it is, and everybody agrees. And I think Mr. Stanley thought I was going to make seniors go longer in, after Memorial Day. And I said, well, no. And once we dug in, I said, I understand a Memorial Day graduation if you're in Minnesota and you're going up later. I just wasn't sure why we did it. So again, I asked the questions. And we are the only ESD school who had graduation that late. And typically, seniors will get out a little earlier than others, which allows for them, if they are not quite complete, they can do some just individual, what they need to do. But it is also okay sometimes in high schools for seniors to be done a few days early. Then they do graduation, and then you have a few days that they're not in the building. And state law allows for that. It allows for seniors to do that. So once Justin heard that, he said, oh, okay, well, maybe we should ask them. I said, no, I'm not making them go longer. And it was, it was, it was a very large majority said, we would like to consider looking at an earlier date. So we are having an earlier date for at least two years, we can reevaluate later.
Oh, just to clarify, this year, it's still on the regular Memorial Day weekend?
Yes.
Other questions? Okay, we're ready for that vote, Stacy? Those calendars are approved. Our next item is an action item to approve to enter in an agreement with ID Bailey to investigate energy rebate opportunities for the new elementary schools. I need a motion to approve that.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have some, can we have some discussion from you, please, Stacy?
You bet. So this is something that Brian Luters started exploring over a year ago, probably. He had some meetings with ID Bailey that he involved me in before I even was here yet. And this is a newer program that started to be available to schools in 2023. Prior to that, schools were not eligible for rebates. And these focus on thermal storage tanks, chillers and cooling towers, thermal storage plant piping, and the controls that all run the thermal storage. So these are different energy rebates than the ones we got from the Brookings Utility Group. And you can double dip, so to speak, with the energy rebates, even if they were for the same things. It's a completely different program. And ID Bailey is a company that specializes in helping people file for these. I am no energy rebate expert. I don't know anyone who is. And so, of course, there's a cost to that service. But as I talked with the finance committee briefly about, you know, the potential credits they gave me are upwards of $400,000. Those are their estimates. And their fees, if we complete the process and get this, would be about 10% of that, about $40,000. And they told me that if we enter into this agreement, they bill by time. And so if they get a little into it and they're like, nope, this isn't going to work, we'll stop, and it will not be $40,000, it'll be $5,000. And as we talked about, you know, sometimes we got to spend a little money to get a little money back. But I believe that they are very confident that we would exceed our costs in energy rebates. And so I guess anything we got above what it cost us to get them is money we can put back into our capital outlay that we had to transfer to cover the shortage of the project.
We did talk some about this one during the building project that we were going through with Brian, so, yes, very cool.
And it's not a quick process. It would be well into fiscal year '26 before we saw any money. I mean, probably a good year from now, but as soon as we, if we decide we want to do it, they'll get to work.
And as I understood it, we talked about this at finance, and it was, it's a very complex application and forms to fill out.
Yep, and they'll take care of all of it. They'll get, the houseman was awesome at getting them access to all the information they needed, you know, the capacities and what, all, everything they needed. They led him into the site that they could access all that. So, and when I saw Pierce a week or two ago, he said, you know, if you need anything else, let us know, we can reopen that. So I think it'll be a lot of hands off for us, which I appreciate. And we just will feed them the information they need, and they'll take care of all the filing and everything.
Any other questions? Okay, then we're ready for the vote, Stacy. Thank you. That motion passes. The next action item is an approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Brookings School District and Dakota Wesleyan University for student teachers.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is this any discussion? My question is, have we done this before? I would?
Not with Dakota Wesleyan.
Fine.
We have, we have quite a few.
So we're ready for the vote, then? That motion passes. The next action item is approval of the Eastern South Dakota Food Buying Group for 2025-26 school year.
I make a motion to approve. I second that.
Think this is standard, and we've been with this group for a long?
I don't think there's any changes. Correct, Stacy? No.
So we're ready for that vote, Stacy? I have that, Kelly. Are you on the next one? So this one, last month, we had a few questions and wanted to wait on. And so it is the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Rising Hope Counseling and the Brookings School District. between Rising Hope Counseling and the Brookings School District. I would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Very moved.
I'll second that.
Deb seconds. I think it was good that we had it looked over, because there were a few changes made. And this is for that counseling group to be able to come into our school and work with the students that they have.
Correct. And it was, it was not something that we put in place. It was a way that Rising Hope was working with a family to take away that barrier of transportation.
Okay, we're ready for that vote, Stacy? That motion passes. Now we have, need a motion to approve the schedule Wednesday, April 16, 2025, as the date for negotiations with VEA.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion in a second. I think Amanda had sent out, and this was a date that worked for everybody concerned. So we're ready for that vote, Stacy? That takes us to appointing a board member to serve as a representative on the Board of Equalization. And thank you, Kelly, for offering to take
Monday.
Tuesday, March 18.
Excuse me, not all three days.
So is there anyone who could do the Monday, the March 17? That's an afternoon session from 1:30 to 5:30. Or March 20 is a Thursday from 9 to noon?
I can't make it, I can't with the date.
And sometimes they get canceled, too, but...
You know what, I could take the 17. Usually, the first ones, somebody has to be at.
Yeah.
And then if there's not enough, as many appeals, the other ones are canceled. I can take the 17.
I'll do the 18.
Somebody take the 20? Okay, I can take the 20 as well.
What time is the 20?
20 is 9 to noon.
I can do that, too. I can do that one.
I think last year, it was only one day.
A couple years ago.
So Kelly, I'm putting you, I'm putting you on for the 18th and the 20th. And I will send to Angie.
Yeah, and I also did that other thing. So again, I do accept bribery of chocolate. Just kidding, just kidding. I'm using it, thanks, guys. No, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so the motion would be that Teresa will do the 17, Kelly will do the 18th and the 20th.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, so we'll have the vote, please, Stacy? That motion passes. But now I need a motion to move into executive session pursuant to South Dakota Code of Law 1-25-2 subsection 4.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We're ready for that vote.
I motion.
There probably won't be action when we come out.
And there probably will be no action after. There will be no action after. Thank you, Admiralty. Thank you all for coming.